As you can tell tonight, for the first time, we're going remote. So everybody at home, keep your fingers crossed and see where you can keep this going forward. We'd like to begin tonight again, as we always do, with a pledge of allegiance to the flag, followed by a silent moment. Thank you all. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which I stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Tonight's meeting will be, as I said earlier, recorded remotely. We're live remotely. One thing I want to keep in touch with everybody about is that any votes we take will be done on a roll call. So there's no confusion. It may take a few minutes longer for each vote, but we'll get it done according to the governor's recommendations. So the first thing I want to start with tonight on new business would be number one. Michael Roberts, Avalon Bay Communities, submitting proposal to convert Avalon Noward to a local initiative program, also referred to as a LIP. Comments from the board? Mr. Plasko.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is something we might want to work further into. And I suggest that we appoint Mr. Mazuko and a member of the board to sit down with Mr. Roberts and discuss the possibility of an MOU.
I think we should just sit at the head.
Mr. Hajar?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Bill in the letter. Although he's asking for approval, the letter states in the first paragraph that the formal procedure would involve a public meeting format and goes on. I presume that that public meeting format should take place first before we do anything. So we can, it talks about they would review the specific details of the LIP. So at the very least, we'd want to have that go through before we would entertain consideration. The other is a question that talks about 198,000 at the bottom of the first page of the letter, going towards relevant town boards, but it specifically calls out the schools. Is that by law or is that what they're recommending as something that they want to do? Or is it up to us to draw the line of where that money goes to?
Mr. Mazuko?
I'll defer to Mr. Plasko.
Mr. Plasko.
I believe that's just a suggestion on their part. And that's one of my reasons for suggesting we sit down and review that number as well as how it will be used. So we'll have a final memorandum agreement that we're all in agreement with. And then we can go through the actual process if that's what we choose.
I personally like that idea of myself as setting down, sitting down. And Mr. Mazuko and maybe Mr. Plasko or just Mr. Mazuko, just to get some basic foundation in is what they want and what we want to do. And then we can go from there and have any kind of a formalized meeting from that point on. Mr. Howard?
So a motion, Chairman?
What are you moving? I already made a motion.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Second then.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to move forward on that with a meeting. As stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Howard?
Yes.
Plasko? And the chairman, the chair votes yes. That's. Repeat that again, sir. Mr. Maloney, did you have something?
No, well, we've already voted. I think probably just sort of off the record, I think, I think the LIP is more valuable to us than $1,000 per unit. But that's probably part of the conversation. Secondly, Mr. Hajar pointed out accurately, it references money to be determined for the schools to be determined by the relevant boards. Not sure I like that language very much. I think it should be the Board of Selectmen. I don't particularly argue with the intended use if it has to do with the schools. But I think it should, there should just be one board that receives the money and decides what is spent. But we'll leave it voted on and I'll leave Mr. Plasko and Mr. Mazuko.
I agree with that totally. So it's unanimous with no opposition to sit down Avalon Bay for a discussion. And I think all these little issues about who gets what of the $1,000 here or whatever the case may be, we start working out some of those issues at a meeting. Then we'll take it from that rhythm. Moving on to number two. Silma Donovan, S E B Housing LLC, submitting notice of a lottery for six affordable units to be built on Henry Way in Medfield. Information?
Motion to file.
I have a motion to file in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
And Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
And the board votes yes. So. Five in favor, none opposed. Number three, Nick Julio, Stewart Healthcare, submitting an update to Stewart Healthcare response to COVID-19 in Massachusetts with specific focus on the Noward Hospital.
Information to file.
I have a motion here in a second. Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
And the board votes are the affirmative. Five in the affirmative. It passes unanimously. Sir?
I'm sorry. May I ask for one thing on this one? I don't mean to put anyone on the spot. But just asking Mr. Mazuko some of the data here. I know he's been in communication with Dr. Perla at the hospital. Perhaps this ought to wait until his update. But I would like to hear what he knows about the hospital is dealing with this and what obstacles they're dealing with, financial and otherwise. Perhaps just for public information. It'd be later on if you'd rather.
I'll add to my update.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That brings us up to our summer meeting schedule. Submitting by the board's consideration, the following proposed meeting dates for the summer of 2020. May 5th, these are meeting dates, May 5th, May 19th, June 2nd, June 16th and June 30th, as well as July 14th, 28th, August 11th, August 20th, September 15th. Every week there are.
Yeah, I was here there.
Mr. Hajar?
I just have a question, Mr. Chairman, about, you know, we have scheduled annual town meeting and special town meeting towards the end of June. I'm sure there's going to be budget meetings and other things that are going to come up. I just concern that we are scheduling just two meetings in May. I, you know, we typically go into June and then you're into the two-week cycle. Is there a reason why we're putting just two meetings in May? I know you can always add to it, but I don't know why we would just say May is part of now the summer schedule. I realize it's.
We're kind of running out of business. We have to dig deep to find things to put on the agenda every week. And I know we probably could if we tried really, really hard. But like you yourself said, if we need a meeting for any particular reason, we don't have to wait till a Tuesday. We can call a meeting with a 48-hour notice anytime we choose to do that. So that's my opinion on it. Mr. Maloney?
Yeah, thank you. I think we probably should add May 12th to the schedule. We do have, I know, an executive session with the general manager. I think we do have conversations about the annual budget as well. But I think probably, other than that, I guess we're okay. But I agree with Mr. Hajar, maybe one more meeting here might. Look, if we absolutely have nothing to discuss, we can, we can cancel.
Mr. Maluko?
To Mr. Maloney's point, we will have a couple of executive sessions. I know we'll have to have over the course of May. So if you set two formal meetings for May, in addition to being able to set a meeting, and there will be a couple of executive sessions that it might be more convenient to tie in with a regular meeting. So we're not limited by time. So I think the board will probably be meeting more in May. We'll be able to schedule those at a time that's convenient for the board.
So are you proposing that we keep the schedule as typed up here on the form and just be flexible to adding up the dates?
That will be my recommendation for the selfish reason that some of these executive sessions, it would be nice to have just the executive session on the agenda. So we're not worried about running into the schedule of a regular meeting with the executive session.
And if I could add to that, we can have an executive session at 2:00 in the afternoon or 3:00 in the afternoon, which is convenient. We don't have to attach it necessarily to a select meeting.
Absolutely.
Mr. Plasko?
Yeah, too, the points or at least one of the points Mr. Hajar made, we likely need to call a special town election for finishing up current year, which we would likely call for the June 22nd. But we need at least 14 days for that. So with this schedule, I think we'd have to do it no later than June 2nd. I might want to keep that in mind as we're moving forward. We don't have to wait to the last day, but it seems to me we couldn't wait until then. And also, we might want to check in with the manager, have the manager check in with the town clerk. Anything special that has to be done with the election. And if there's anything that takes any action by this board that has fallen to us in a timely manner, considering the schedule.
And when are you saying this election is going to take place?
Election is June 8th. The town meeting, town meeting I was talking about before.
Okay. I thought you were talking about an election on June 22nd. So why don't we take a vote on this and decide one way or another? Mr., this is, somebody make a motion.
I'll make them. Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we adopt the schedule as published here on the agenda with the understanding that we, we may have to add executive sessions as needed. But we do that anyway, right? So I'll just, I propose that we adopt the schedule as submitted.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. And again, on that motion, we don't have to have anything attached to a particular meeting. We can call executive session at any point in time, at any time during the day, early evening, as long as we give a 48-hour notice to the general public. So Mr. Hajar? Vote.
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Unanimous? That brings us up to the 2021 budget discussion. Anybody want to kick that off? Mr. Mazuko, you want to have anything to say on that?
Aye. It's up to the board to decide what you'd like to see for a budget process this year. Typically, traditionally, we would bring individual department heads before the board to present their budget. Couple of changes this year, obviously, logistically, that's a little bit challenging. The FinCom did dispense with that process this year. We will do public presentations later on once the budget is adopted and it's ready to go to town meeting, similar to what we did last year. The board should obviously does need to hold a hearing, hold a meeting. It has to vote on the light department budget, but it's up to you if you want to try to bring in all the individual budgets. I will tell you, most part, the general government budget is very vanilla this year. We came in within the 3.5% cap that we were allocated by as a result of the override MOU. And we're meeting all the conditions thereof. So it processed at the meeting was fairly straightforward on. Last week when they met, they're deferring on final approval of the budget until the selectmen weighed in. But it's a fairly vanilla budget, all things being considered.
Comments? Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we, because of the situation this year, that we have the budget discussions between the board with Mr. Mazuko representing the managers that we normally bring in.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, that motion and I'll second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion to have Mr. Mazuko represent on the motion, Mr. Hajar?
Well, I think Bill had his hand up before I did. If you want to jump in, otherwise I'll go.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. I just want to fully understand what you're saying, Alan. We're going to have a meeting to talk about the budget with the general manager in what, selective?
No.
Department heads or no department heads?
Well, unless we figure we need a specific department manager, I would say that we just, we just discussed the budgets with Mr. Mazuko this year because of the emergency conditions that we have. That seems to say that even, even if they open things up in a few weeks, it's still going to be very tight operating situations. And I just want to give us a little leeway there that not having to bring in the people like we normally do. As Mr. Mazuko said, it's a pretty vanilla budget. It is what it is this year because it's, in effect, the second year of the override.
Well, I have a concern, Mr. Chairman. I understand not bringing in every department head. I mean, that is not a good amount of our time. But there are, I think, some of the larger departments that I still have questions on, even though it's vanilla. Looking at history and what we're doing this year, and there are some questions. Now, maybe Tony feels adequate enough to do it, but I didn't want to exclude the major department heads from having the ability to come before us and say, or explain, this is what's going on in their budget, or this is what's happened this past year.
Normally, we would bring in the major department heads, the police, the fire, general government, and so on, which took light department, public works and so on, which tallies about seven or maybe eight major players, department heads. Normally, we would dedicate one particular Tuesday night or even sometimes we did it on a Saturday. So whatever the board chooses, I have no problem with either way. I probably would prefer department heads myself. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to hear from the department heads too, but I'll tell you what, maybe it does seem kind of impractical to be bringing people, especially if we continue in this form. Would it make any, I'd like this to Mr. Hajar first of all, but all of us, would it make sense if perhaps we put together a list of questions we had about various department items? Perhaps Mr. Mazuko could go search of the answers and bring them in? Would that, would that be a better use of the time and be sensitive to the communication issues we have? Satisfactory?
Mr. Plasko?
Yes, I support the motion to have the manager present the budget. I think, again, we've all said it's kind of a vanilla budget. That doesn't mean individual members don't have questions, but I think he would be able to answer probably 90, 95% of them, if not 100%. And if there were still questions after that, doesn't mean we can't take it up at the next meeting or even have a special meeting with outstanding matters that still concern us. So I think we could proceed in that way. It is his obligation under the charter to present the budget for the selection. He's prepared one. Let him present it. Let him explain all the outstanding conditions this year. Like, you know, is there a reason to be concerned about a loss of revenue and so forth? Address those issues, address the budget specifically, answer all the questions. And then if there are specific questions, as Mr. Maloney just alluded to, people could send them in in advance. And as I said, if we're still unsatisfied, we can ask for certain individuals to come in at the following meeting or even call a special meeting if the timing requires it. But I think we should start off with simply having a presentation by the manager. And one thing I would ask personally in advance is that some part of that discussion include the capital budget? That's something we tend to slip by us and like to see conversation on that, how we're handling that this year.
Okay. Why don't I try to give everybody a little slice of the pie here? We'll have Mr. Mazuko handle the presentation, but I would ask each and every individual selectman, if they have any question or questions, to submit them to Christina Mulgrew-Hill, our executive secretary. She can put them together and present them to Mr. Mazuko, and he can have them answered in a fashion. Is that okay with you, Mazuko?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. It's always a good process.
I think the one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
I think the one thing we haven't discussed is, when do we have in this discussion? At our next meeting, two weeks, when do we have in that discussion?
That's where we started out.
You might end up having a May 12th meeting after all.
I'm sitting here looking at the calendar, thinking the same thing. Is the 19th too late to do this? Or we could set a whole different date altogether, just for the budget process? You want to do that?
The 5th is two weeks, the 5th is two weeks from now. Is that not enough time to get our questions in?
One week from now.
Write it down.
That's one week. Excuse me.
That's enough time. No?
Not for me. I only have five questions I've written down so far.
Why don't we get them all written down? Fast, as fast as possible. Submit them to Christina Mulgrew-Hill, and we'll set a date at that time. How's that?
Part of it, Mr. Chairman, depends on what else is on the agenda for next week, whether we could accomplish the discussion with Tony that, that night or if we want to start earlier to accommodate additional time for budget discussion. Correct?
If we take it earlier evening, we could start at 4:00 instead of 7:00 or something like that. But again, I think it'll depend on how many questions we get, what kind of an agenda we have for that particular night. So again, I repeat myself, maybe we should just submit the questions and try to put all the pieces together at that point in time.
Okay with me.
Do I have a motion? To accept that, Mr. Plasko?
Can we clarify? I think Mr. Howard had made a motion to have the budget presented just by the manager, but that that budget discussion take place at our next meeting. So we have that set?
Yes. No, no problem. No problem, Mr. Plasko.
Second?
Mr. Howard has changed that motion to accommodate the needs. And Mr. Plasko has seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
I might take it though. Everyone has our, everyone has our.
Chair votes yes. So that's, that's that. We'll get that moving right along. Number six on the new business, Thomas McQuaid, Director of Finance and Accounting, submitting request for the board's reconsideration for his letter of retirement dated June 6th, 2020. At that point in time, if we remember, he submitted a letter of potential retirement or.
Wow.
Whatever you want to call it at that time, and he had to withdraw that at this point in time. Mr. Hajar?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I personally don't have a problem with it. But I just wanted to hear actually from our two appointed members, Bill Plasko and Tom Maloney, regarding the process that started, you know, where it stands, if it stopped, why, why it stopped and what their understanding of the schedule is. If we're not anywhere near the beginnings of the whole process, then it would only make sense to keep, keep Tom on. Certainly, it's not going to harm the town any. But I just would like to hear from those two gentlemen.
Plasko, would you like to start off?
I believe the manager to the process has received 17 approximately applications. As I've looked through them personally, there are several that are quite qualified on paper and they're very interesting that we'd want to interview and look at. That said, our committee had just one organizational meeting and then Mr. McQuaid's letter of resignation was received. The manager then received a request from Mr. McQuaid to stay on and basically withdraw his resignation. And he was amenable to that. And so he sent out a letter to all the candidates telling them the process was on hold. So nothing further has taken place regarding interviews or reviewing the job description or salary schedules or any of that. Nothing taken place at this date. We did have a discussion that technically it's this board that should be accepting Mr. McQuaid's resignation and dealing with it. So he has sent this letter. He sent that letter along and now he's sending this letter for us to do the reconsideration of whether we should keep him or not. I think that based on that process that I just described and the fact that these people have been, applicants have been advised, the whole thing's on hold, the process is on hold. Really are in the budget, having to get through this town meeting and then close out the fiscal year and other matters that need to be done. I think it makes sense to accept Mr. McQuaid's offer to stay on. Personally, personally, I'd like to see some type of limit at this time, like ask him to stay on for another year and have the manager start the process again, say in January, so that we have a nice timely process to find a replacement. That's my initial thoughts at this time.
Anything else? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I agree with Bill. I'm in the, in the group too. And I appreciate Mr. Hajar's asking. The process has sort of gone retrograde a little bit here or probably further back than we were a few. I haven't had the time to look at the patients. I know they're available to me, so. But I do think probably even the people who are applying right now are under pressure to hold where they are in their respective capacities and responsibilities because of the current crisis. So my guess is the timing works out something like this. We're more or less back in normal sometime in the next 90 days. And then you're into the summer. You get through that and you begin to formulate plans. I think probably by January, we can restart this process, perhaps earlier. But, but, but by January, if we want to keep Mr. McQuaid all the way till the end of the next fiscal year, well, then we're back in the situation we're in now where the real heavy work gets done in March and April. So I have no problem accepting his offer under the current stance. And I think probably, Mr. Mazuko, we're probably going to have to get in contact with these folks who apply. And I'm sure they'll understand that if we suspend for the time being, we might be suspending it for nine months or more. But I think, I think it's a necessity, Mr. Chairman.
I also feel the same way. I think we should wait till January. The reason being, we need the continuity at this time. We can return to the process in January. He still has to close out the fiscal year. And there's a lot of work to be done in a really not the best team, so to speak. So, sorry, Mr. Hajar?
Yeah, I just want Tom, Tony or Bill to clarify the one year. Is it a year from now, a year from August when he offered the end of the fiscal year next, you know, FY '21? Just, can we have an exact date here for the record?
My, my personal suggestion was a year from now that we ask him if he will continue for one year. So when he agrees, based on the way he wrote his letter, we move forward. However, listening to Mr. Maloney's comments, we might want to ask staff for nine months instead and move the process along. Might be better timing.
Why don't we go with the date of the submission of the letter? I don't have that date in front of me.
April 20th?
You mentioned the.
Question, Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Mazuko. Given the work that we're doing on Munis and given the need to close out the current fiscal year in these uncertain conditions, should we just say we intend to keep the current financial director up for the next 14 months and take us through the next fiscal year entirely? Does that, does that make the most sense? Does that make the most sense in a practical, practical way?
It does, there are two things that are at work here. One is, he doesn't have a contract, and I believe his language referenced working towards the end of his contract. I believe he's more than halfway through a three-year agreement. That would roughly line us up with doing the process next year at the same time we envisioned it this year. And we set that timeline up so that we can have the CFO guide us through town meeting in a traditional year and leave right around the start of the fiscal year as we've closed all the books. That's the best possible case, best possible area time-wise, you have to replace CFO. Both for us and whichever community we're going to steal the CFO from. So if we make it easy for somebody to exit their community, it also means we're going to get a better candidate. If we started earlier with the hopes of bringing somebody on board by next April, March, or April or May, we're looking at transitioning somebody right in the middle of town meeting, not being an ideal time to transition. We have Tom, the ability to line it up with the fiscal year, if you ever take a couple of weeks, it's the easy transition process for us to make.
We also have some talk in the background somewhere, I don't know where it's coming from. But there was conversation in the background, somebody.
I think community media, no, their mics are up.
Anyway, I think somebody took care of it for me. So, so somebody want to make a motion as to what they want to do?
One question, Mr. Chairman, what is the term and state of Mr. McQuaid's current contract?
Mizuko, jump in on that?
He's in a three-year contract, I believe he's in a year and a half or so into it. If you give me just a second, if you want to continue the discussion, I'll see if I can pull it up quickly.
I got it right in front of me, Tony, it's three years, ending on June 30th, 2021.
So he would, his original letter, he said to finish out the contract, which is next year anyway, the end of next fiscal.
14 months, okay.
Mr. Howard, comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that seems a convenient date to me, June 30th, that next spring, budgets, all that stuff. Another election coming up, hopefully in early April next year, et cetera, et cetera. I think June 30th works very well.
Any comments or anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept Mr. McQuaid's offer to stay on to complete his contract.
Second?
I have a motion to allow Mr. McQuaid to complete his contract, and I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Hajar? Mr. Maloney? Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
And the board votes yes, so unanimous, five, zero. Next on our agenda would be a memoranda, submitting monthly report, William G. Brooks, Chief of Police Department, submitting a monthly report, motion to take his information this time?
A move.
Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Second.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. That brings us up to managers' update. Mr. Mizuko, you're muted.
Thank you, I have two items to the board tonight, the first one being, two plus an update. The first one being acceptance of donations for the Norwood Fund. What I'd be asking the board to do is accept donations to the Norwood Fund on behalf of the town through the state of emergency for a period of 30 days afterwards to be used for the stated purpose of the Norwood Fund. And if we need to go beyond that for some reason, we would come back. Just want to make sure, appreciate and follow the formalities of both the statute that allows us to accept donations as well as the Civil Defense Act, which does it. And the particular law escapes me at the moment, but I believe Mr. Plasko knows which law.
4453A?
Of course. Fifty-three and a half. All right, we have a motion to accept?
Aye.
And we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Plasko, this is getting old.
Yes, yes.
And the board votes yes, so that has passed, that looks like, I know.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hajar?
Right, so we pass that, so that's on the income side and we vote to support, which is great. The expenses, how those funds go out, can that be explained to us as well?
Sure, it's through existing channels that we have for providing aid through the senior center, the Veterans Office and the Gift of Warmth Fund. We have an existing intake process that we follow, and those are what we still follow for the fund. So that's one of the reasons we set it up this way, is we already had an existing framework to do an intake process.
Thank you.
You're welcome, any other questions? Okay, moving on, we have a discussion regarding the municipal parking lots and the repaving. We have Mr. Mark Ryan, our Director of Public Works slash Town Engineer on the screen also here, joining with us. So, Mr. Mizuko, do you want to kick that off?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As the board had requested some time ago, we have completed the design work for the repaving of our municipal lots in the downtown area. We have provided that information to the board, you do have copies of the lots. I believe the Talbot Lot is the only one that's looking at any real design change. So we wanted to bring these to the board for the approval and discussion. And assuming the board does go forward with it, we'll be able to get the project out to bid at some point and get it done, hopefully soon. I do have the ability to put some of the maps up on the screen for the board and anyone watching to see, you'll just have to get the technology to work. However, you've been provided with the maps, and we did bring Mr. Ryan in here to ask any specific questions about each of the maps or each of the designs, and we will be more than happy to do so, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, questions? Mr. Plasko?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ryan, for taking the time to be here. I had asked for these and kind of insisted that we still hadn't received them, so I thank you for presenting them. Most of them are pretty routine, it looks like, except for the Talbot, a little extra work going on there as far as little islands and things that don't exist today. So I have a couple of questions regarding that, it looks fine, but it says restrike 200 spaces. Do you know how many are there, are we gaining, losing?
Yes, Mr. Plasko, and good evening, everyone, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's great to see your faces. Haven't seen many of you around town, but you know, so we have seven parking lots in front of you. You know, and one of them is the combined Town Hall Parking Lot, most of them are pretty straightforward. But as Mr. Plasko said, Talbot is the challenging one where, you know, we need to kind of get some feedback from the members of the board how we want to proceed. It's a no-brainer that, you know, the area in front of Babel's can accommodate a landscaped island with some trees. We're talking about six trees there. But when you get to the back lot, as you look at the plan on your screen, I guess it would be at 12 o'clock, that larger area. You know, what do we really want to do with that? And in this scenario, to answer Mr. Plasko's question, there's 221 spaces in the entire parking lot. The proposal shows 200 spaces. And I'm not sure if the board is comfortable losing 21 spaces. We did do a parking lot study and, you know, the parking lot is really underused. You know, we did it for a week and that particular section in the back. I mean, we're talking about an occupancy around 23 to 25%. So losing spaces there is not a hard hit. But, you know, we need some kind of direction, do we want to try to get some more green space or space is more important? Personally, not knowing what's going to go on through the center of town with some of the proposals to encourage, you know, more residential, I would lean towards less trees in that spot back there and try to retain as many spaces. But I would like some kind of direction from the board on how to proceed on that particular area. The rest of it's pretty benign, it's pretty straightforward. What you have is what you get, but it's that back section that's probably at 12 o'clock, as you look at your plan, are we willing to give up, you know, 21 spaces to get a few more trees? Or do we want to keep the parking count as close as possible to what we have now?
Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening, good evening, Mr. Ryan. If it's only 21 spaces and we still have approximately 200, I think that works pretty well, in my opinion. That's all I know, thank you.
Let me say this, in that back area, Mr. Ryan, I think we both can agree that that's been underutilized. There's been a lot of vehicles there that should not be there, unregistered and so on. But we could probably take that 20, 21 car hit, but the question is, do we really want to do that? Any other comments? Mr. Hajar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mark, for providing the documents. Two comments, one is, me personally, I'd like to see some bushes along the fencing that separates the parking lot from the houses on Cottage and Maple Street, just to give us some, you know, viewing that doesn't just look that bad, give some protection to the neighbors as well. I do hate to give up 21 spaces, but I understand if we have to. Do you have any concerns about the snow plowing issues by creating these islands?
So, great question, Mr. Hajar, this is not my favorite layout, this is one of our layouts. We've got a couple others. This is not the best, when you talk about plowing, and you're absolutely correct. We have some other ones, it might, it won't be more than 21 spaces that we lose. But there'll be some green space and make it a lot more effective as far as maintaining. And, you know, I was hoping tonight to get some direction and then bring back another plan just for this one, because the other ones are straightforward, in my opinion, to get a better consensus on the final product.
Mr. Hajar, sir?
Yes, I can, as a follow-up, thanks, Mark. Personally, I'd like to see some alternative plans, just on this one, and all the other plans, I think you're right, they're pretty straightforward. I can see approving all the others and let's get on with it, it's been a while and I know we're all sort of anxious to see these lots get completed and move on to some other capital improvement projects. But personally, I'd like to see some alternatives to this one. But I would like to see the issue of trying to put some bushes along the fencing for the houses on Cottage Street and Maple Street and see if there's another plan that might work, that might be easier for snow plowing purposes. Otherwise, I just feel we're going to be repairing the berms every, every single year. And without seeing another plan, I just feel a little uncomfortable, but that's me.
Mr. Plasko?
Thank you, I agree, I don't find this to be that workable. I'm a little concerned about losing the spaces, I know most of the year, there are quite a few vacant spaces up there. But no-a-day and other times of the year, it does fill up. Religious days, the big turnout at the church and probably mostly no-a-day, but 4th of July, of course. So, and with the other hopeful developments downtown, we may be needing some more spaces. And Mr. Hajar's point is very well taken, I'd like to see some of the other plans as well before endorsing what goes on here with hopefully some ability to save some of those 21 spaces, not all of them. I had a concern too about the strip in front of Babel's, if you will, where it looks like you're going to add some trees. It seems like the travel lanes there between the parking areas are already fairly narrow for people pulling in and out. Are you concerned about losing too much space there?
Actually not, years ago when we were back in the Peewitt Project building, you were very involved. I remember going out there and those aisles are extra wide, so they can afford to lose a couple feet on each aisle to create this landscaped island through there. So I'm comfortable.
All right, thank you. The other thing is, I guess I apologize, part of asking for these plans is I had asked for, and maybe not very clearly, some idea of what we, how we might be changing the use of them. In other words, where there might be one-hour parking, where there might be all-day parking, where there might be sticker parking for residents to be able, buy a stick and be able to park their cars there. And Mr. Mizuko had presented something, I think Mr. Collins put together, about the current practices and/or regulations. But I was wondering if there were going to be any changes to those? And if it may fit, while this work's being done, to put in the stands where the signs would be? It doesn't seem to be part of this project. I know you can do it afterwards, but would it be easier to do it all at once?
So I'll take that, Mr. Plasko. So there are no plans in changing the time requirements there? It's a very easy fix during the project to put signs in, if you want to change some of the hours and, you know, requirements of having a sticker. You know, we're more than open to that, that's an easy fix, we have an item in there for signage and posts. So you just, you know, if you've got some ideas, we love to hear them.
Okay, well, actually, we developed some regulations, the board voted to approve them, but they don't get enforced by the police department. And that's why I was wondering if the mayor would give us an update on some proposals and how we can make sure it works effectively. Another question, if I move on to the Central Street. One item there, you're eliminating the berm along the right-hand side next to the Noa Printing Building. I assume that was put there originally to, I'm sorry, it does say in replace, I missed the word replace earlier, sorry. I thought you're eliminating it altogether. That was all set, okay.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Ryan. This is a good work product. I do share my colleagues' concerns about the reduction of spaces and perhaps a second iteration might be in order here. I, just to go back to what Bill said about those times of maximum use, I can tell you, it's Sunday Mass down there for St. Catharines, they get pretty, the lot does get pretty full for the nine and 11 o'clock masses. Also, there's somebody in an 18-wheel truck, I've noticed, parks out there on a Sunday. But perhaps Mr. Plasko is right about the enforcement matter, we should probably make that part of the overhaul here. But if, Mr. Hajar's point about the snow plowing is a good one, and Mr. Ryan, it appears you concur. So perhaps something that perhaps is more open, if it means less green space and more trees, will so be it. I think the number of spaces and the orderliness of movement of the lot is more important than beautification, though I'll take as much of each as I can get. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney, now if I could just jump in on that too. I agree with everything Mr. Hajar, Mr. Maloney, Mr. Plasko has said. And I also understand what Mr. Ryan is saying, this is not the optimum plan that he would have chosen. There are some substitute plans in place. What I'd like to do is move on to the other parking lot and then have Mr. Ryan come back with something that he feels is a more suitable plan going forward, Mr. Plasko?
Hope that we approve all the plans submitted by Mr. Ryan, except for the Talbot Lot, and ask him to submit additional recommendations. Second?
On the motion?
On the motion, sir.
Just one question, maybe, Mr. Mizuko, this might be, or Mr. Ryan, on the lot, the lot at Day and Central Street across from Annapolis, we've redesigned the entire lot, is there, I know the ownership issue is a little unusual. We share ownership of that lot with one or two other parties, does that factor into what we're doing here? Do we have to resolve that, should we seek to buy out the other owner or owners in order to make this? Are we prohibited from doing any work because of that situation?
We are not. We are going to, started discussions with the property owners that own part of that lot, and we're going to seek some sort of equitable relief from them for a portion of the cost of the project. They could tell us no that they're not going to provide anything. We then couldn't pay for our lot, they didn't, so we're somewhat committed to doing it one way or another, but we believe they should pay some sort of amount to cover a portion of the cost since they could be receiving a benefit of it as well.
Do, do we want to approach them about buying out their interest?
We can certainly ask them about that as well. One of the lots is attached to one of the restaurant buildings. I have a feeling that that's very, very valuable to that parcel, and they may not be willing to part with that. It's always worth asking, but I think it's going to be of value to them to be able to attach to that parcel.
Perhaps coming out of a pandemic, they might listen. Thank you.
Mr. Plasko.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to say, we should pursue this and we should try to get it more formal and and legal, but there are some issues with them giving up the property because of access and so forth that might make it a little difficult. There has been a traditional, and I don't know where it started, but there has been a policy and a practice between the landlords and the town that we maintain the lot, but they allow us to use it. Otherwise, they could put up fences and everything, and all day long, as we have people downtown that are using that lot, because you'll see it mostly full all day, we'd be short parking spaces. So there's been a mutual understanding and agreement there. We might need more formalized going forward, but that has been the past history.
And I think I agree with you on that, by the way. Mr. Hujar, you had a question?
Well, yeah, I think that could be a separate motion, but I agree, we should pursue it. There are ways to negotiate the deal to allow them to continue parking and have rights to those spaces, but we would maintain control over it. I think it is a little bit of a mess, and maybe now is the time to really try to complete this deal, get control over the total lot to ensure that it's kept up to standards and that certain rights are allowed, but obviously, we have to get legal involved, but it's probably a different motion, but I agree with that concept myself.
Mr. Plasko.
I just add, part of the process to keep in mind, and Ms. Mazuko alluded to it, that the Siblo Restaurant uses those parking spaces. And they don't only use them in practice, but the zoning board of appeals, in order to let them have the seating and everything that they had, they had to show that they had those parking spaces, as well as some that they rent across the street behind one of the medical centers. So it may be very important to them to hold on to, so we'll have to see how it goes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is what happens. We make a motion and second, then we go on to a 15-minute discussion. Repeat the motion, please.
Motion, well, did we already vote on the No, no. So the motion was to approve all of the parking lot plans submitted except for the Talbot and to ask Mr. Ryan to submit all the plans.
And the second is coming from
Me, David.
And if I could, on the motion. This is from Mr. Mazuko and Mr. Ryan. I've gotten some phone calls from the senior center and people at the senior center and attending the senior center about the deplorable conditions apparently in that parking lot. They complain about puddles after heavy rains, potholes, and are concerned about the safety of the seniors coming and going from that building. It should be a convenience to the seniors, and I don't think it should be some kind of a battlefield where they have to pass through to get to the front doors of the senior center. I guess my question is, if we have a list of X, Y, Z amount of parking lots, is there a way that we could put the senior center on the top of the list? Mr. Mazuko.
The senior center lot is included in this bid package, so it'll go out as one bid package.
Correct, but I'm saying, you're not going to all do it at the same time. You're going to do them in order. Could we raise the senior center up to the top of the list?
Yeah, the goal is to get the senior center lot done over the summer, because that's actually a slower period for them. We may still be in our social distancing in one form or another, when this actually goes out to bid and we start getting bids in, but either way, the goal would be to try to get the senior center lot done in the summer when the center is used less.
And when do we intend to start the overall project?
So as soon as we have a consensus on a design for the Talbot Lot, it should only take a couple of weeks to get it out of the bid.
Okay, so you will keep that in consideration, though. If you have an opportunity to move it, we can move it. If not, we'll do it at the appropriate time.
If you'd like to, Mr. Chairman, we can, Mr. Ryan can get the board tomorrow alternate designs for the Talbot Lot. If you have any questions, you can submit them to my office and we'll work with Mark to get them answered, and the board can take up the Talbot Lot at their next available meeting. Once a decision has been made, the project can go out to bid fairly quickly thereon, so we can get moving on the whole project.
I think my question was answered, but I'm not sure. Of all the projects, is the senior center going up towards the top of the list?
Yes, that's the priority to get done first.
I get the thumbs up from Mr. Ryan, so I'm all set. Thank you both for that information. Mr. Ryan, thank you for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great seeing everyone of you.
Same here.
Thanks, Mr. Ryan. The great Mr. Chairman, you need to take your vote on that.
I will. That concludes the information on the municipal lots. So do I have a motion and I have a second, I believe?
Yes.
Mr. Hujar. Don't smile at me, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Maloney? Mr. Howard? Mr. Plasko?
Yes.
And the board votes yes, so that's unanimous. That should complete our agenda for this evening. I'll take selectmen.
I just, on a related matter, because I don't want to lose the discussion that we had regarding pursuing the possibility of taking full control of the lot on Day Street. So I'd like to move that we have the general manager pursue with town council what the issues may be in moving forward with that, and if we have to have one of us get involved about negotiation, we can deal with that later, but at least we can allow Tony to move forward just to identify the issues.
I agree with that totally, and I believe that was, in my opinion, a part of the whole concept. There has to be some clarification on who owns what, who maintains it, and so on and so on. So I think before we get started on that lot, there has to be some kind of a conversation, which Mr. Mazuko could probably start with assigning somebody to find out what we need to find out and go from there. Is that amenable to you, Mr. Hujar?
It sure is.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start with this evening's agenda. Mr. Hujar, do you have any type of conversation to have?
I just have one added, Mr. Chairman. Well, two. One is for us to keep on thanking the employees and the volunteers and all the individuals involved with keeping this town safe. As we go through it, I understand that the governor has extended for two additional weeks the stay-at-home order. So it looks like, you know, we're finally have hit the peak. We've had a few days in a row where the numbers are on the downside, which is good. So while we may have not cleared all the hurdles, it looks like we are going to get there, so we ask people's patience. And I want to thank Tony and his full team of not just the paid staff, but the volunteers who are out there every day trying to do what they can on different days for different functions and activities as far as food distribution, gift cards, masks, you name it, they're doing it, so keep up the great job for all the town. My second is, I'd like to put on the agenda for next week, a short discussion about the wireless communication regulations, the small cell facilities. We started that discussion with Jimmy Collins a few months ago. And these are the regulations that the board selectmen have to approve regarding the aesthetics and how we're going to deal with companies that come to us and want to apply for a permit to put something on an existing pole or to install a new pole to house a facility for them to increase their, basically, it's for 5G. And I'd like to talk about the use of a company called the Center for Municipal Solutions. They don't charge municipalities, but they are heavily involved with thousands over the country in helping us make sure that we have the right regulations and to help us review permits as they come in to make sure that they meet what we need, they're experts. And I'd rather do most of explaining next week and provide some documentation so that you all feel comfortable with if that's an avenue you want to move forward on. So I would ask that that be put on the agenda for next week.
We shall do that, sir. Mr. Mazuko, do you have any comments? You could touch, reach out to Mr. Collins and get some information, or possibly have him sign in next week?
We believe we have everything buttoned up. We can have Jimmy here if the board would like for a conversation. Again, it's your capacity as the board of selectmen with this particular item, but it's very intimately related to the work that the light department does. It's just regulations for small cell wireless attachments to poles, and we do need to have something on, something in writing. We have had a request if the board remembers, it was a month ago from a company that did want to put a few in. We have continued to dialogue with them on that, and I anticipate that coming back to the board at some point in the future as well.
So if that's okay with everybody in the board, we'll have Mr. Collins sign on next week and give us an explanation of what's transpiring. Is that amenable, Mr. Hujar?
Oh, yes. No, Jimmy has been involved with developing the regulations. We've involved town council as well. So we're we're almost ready for the board to fully review them and approve them, but there are some outstanding questions. And that's why I want to bring in the Center for Municipal Solutions to help us at no cost to the town. So, yep, we'll be ready.
Okay, any other questions on that? You have something else, Mr. Hujar?
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. First of all, I I had the pleasure of joining Mr. Mazuko in 10 hours. The Food Security Working Group meeting via phone yesterday lasted about 90 minutes. I think there was a lot of good conversation and plans made, and perhaps before we go home tonight, Mr. Mazuko can give us a little bit of an update on what we're doing on the food bank. It is an unusual thing. We're doing quite a bit of work here in the town and the school department as well, so perhaps he should talk about that when we're, before we adjourn. I was also, I also attended the by phone, the Finance Commission meeting last Thursday. It lasted about three and a half hours, but it was actually a pretty good meeting. A lot of ground was covered, and I think Ann Haley did a nice job in chairing that meeting, and Mr. Mazuko was able to cover our side of the budget in detail. And so now he's queued up to answer some of our questions, and the process comes to us. And let's see, I think that's about it. You know what, though, it occurs to me, Mr. Chairman, in this format, you know who you are, Mr. Chairman? You're Paul Lind.
Why do you say that?
Certain people will understand that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. It wouldn't be a night if we didn't have you with us. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I have is, has anybody else had slight breakdowns in the transmission of this?
Yes.
Picture and everything?
Yes, I didn't hear what Mr. Maloney just said, for example.
No, but I mean periodic through the whole, through the whole meeting.
He was my best line.
I know.
I know, we lost it. No, but I've had, I've had like a, if you will, a dozen interruptions, so to speak, for a few seconds.
Yes.
There were some outside communications entering into the conversations. But I think one of the people on board has taken care of that far, so we haven't had a problem after that. As far as breakdown, it seems fairly smooth to me. Anybody else have a problem?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Maloney, would you like to repeat your statement for the benefit of Mr. Plasko?
All I said was, if you, Mr. Chairman, know who you are in this format, and the answer is you are Paul Lind. No, I'm not sure. Okay.
Correct, Hollywood Squares.
I might have gone to Charlie Weaver for the block, but this could work out.
I just wanted to remind the voters that we were required, because of the current situation we're all living through, to change the date of the town election. And that has been changed to June 8th. So there's still plenty of opportunity for people to participate with their vote, and that they don't even need to wait until June 8th for live voting. They can contact the town clerk's office by letter or email and ask for an absentee ballot, and they can do early voting under the changes in the law that the state passed for this current situation. So I just want to encourage people to make sure they vote in this year's town election, and they can get started now if they're prepared. I also want to remind them that at the end of the ballot, there's a question. And that question's whether or not you change the name of the board of selectmen to the select board. And I found it interesting that the two laws in particular that I was involved with that changed the date of town election, town meeting, and so forth, where the authorization was given to the select board, not selectmen. That's how accepted it seems to have become all around the state. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. And I think if you remember my prior conversation, approximately two-thirds of the state have already changed to the designation of select board, if I'm not mistaken. And is that it? That's everything for everybody? My turn? Thank you. There has been a change in military funerals across the Commonwealth. And I have a declaration here that was presented by Governor Baker. Given the current restrictions on social distancing, military funeral honors are not, and I repeat, not being rendered to our recently deceased veterans at the National Cemetery in Bourne. Now, our deceased veterans being honored across the Commonwealth, including Noah. So our Veterans Agent, Mr. Mulvihill, is going to request, in keeping with this policy, that this board of selectmen gives him permission to lower the flag at half-staff at the Highland Cemetery in order to honor those veterans from around who have passed away during the COVID-19 pandemic. It's going to be one of those nights. So that's basically what's going on. I need a vote from the board to approve the lowering of the flag until such time is this is all over and done with.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion from Mr. Howard. And I have, Mr. Maloney's given me a second, all a favor?
Aye.
Vote unanimously, Mr. Hujar?
Aye.
Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
And the board votes yes, so that's five to nothing. Lastly, if I could just touch on something. Many different restaurants have done a lot for the citizens of Noah. The citizens of Noah. They've given food to Noah Hospital, they've given food to the seniors on it. Excuse me. They've done a lot, and they're in critical shape themselves. So one of the first things I'm going to revisit is the fact that try to go out and order meals from these businesses if you can to try to support them and keep them in business. One of the businesses that have done so much for the town is the Mug and Muffin. My next-door neighbor is David and Sheila Monigan, and I told them I would do this. Sheila's is David's grandson. Matty Kilkless turned 11 years old last week, and they had the parade and the usual drive-by and so on and so on. So on behalf of the board, I want to wish Matty Kilkless a very happy birthday last week, if that's okay with the rest of the board.
Happy birthday to Matty and Mr. Howard.
All right, again, Matty, happy birthday, and I hope you have many, many good years ahead. With that said, we can come back next week with the new improved edition of the remote broadcast. Motion to, usually they're saying it by now, Mr. How, Mr. Plasko.
Was Mr. Mazuko looking to say something additional?
I did have a report, Mr. Chairman, if you would like me to give one, or I could certainly defer it to next week, if you're just, you're calling.
I know it's going to be brief, so go ahead.
Well, with that challenge, let me see if I can get this done. And as brief as I can be, our call center continues to be successful. We're averaging about 100 calls a week to the Citizen Information Center. That phone number is 781-352-2363. Please call us with any questions or problems you have. We are expanding our hours to include weekend hours starting next weekend, thanks to the efforts of some of our fantastic staff and volunteers. We do have, you can call to talk to the call center if you just need to talk to somebody, and we do have a counselor available as well, so please call us with any pro- to somebody, and we do have a counselor available as well. So please call us with any problems you are having. Uh, to Mr. Maloney's point earlier about food security, one of the big challenges we're facing in the community is food security. We, normally the Ecomedical Food Pantry will serve 40 or 50 clients in a week. This past week, they served, uh, upwards of 80. We have set up our temporary food pantry at the high school that we've decided to call the Mustang Pantry for the duration of the emergency and a short time thereafter. Last week, the Mustang Pantry served 88 patrons. Uh, we had 30 turnaways. Uh, we were able through donations to the Norwood Fund to get some immediate relief to those individuals. So as we predicted probably a month or six weeks ago, you're seeing the need for food assistance in the community about four or five times what it normally is. On top of those initiatives, we do have the school cafeteria folks who are doing an incredible job. They are pumping out around, uh, upwards of a thousand meals a day. You can get them at any elementary school. It's any Norwood family with children. You don't have to have kids in the Norwood schools if they go to St. Catherine's or if they're homeschooled, they can get the meals as well. Our weekly family meal program, which was another initiative we came up with to immediately address some of the food security challenges we're facing. Uh, I think the board knows, last week, we received word that Norwood Bank is going to fund that program throughout all of May and June, a donation that will be at least $60,000. So a big thanks to Norwood Bank for their donation. They are going to feed hundreds and hundreds of families and literally thousands of residents in our community. We're forever grateful to them for being so generous to the community when they're in need. This program is a Norwood-only program. It's not being done anywhere else in the Commonwealth. We're not sure if it's being done anywhere else in the country. Our food service workers at the cafeteria, uh, the school cafeterias are preparing family-style meals for dinner consumption once a week, and it's really an incredible program and an incredible process. We served 250 families the first week. We served 330 families the second week, and this week's number will be well over 400. So there is a huge, huge need in the community, and it's continuing to grow. Uh, that's where we are on food security. It continues to be a big challenge. We're still running our senior meal program. Uh, the Meals on Wheels number in Norwood has doubled as a result of a lot of individuals not being able to, uh, come out, and we're still seeing, uh, above-average numbers for the senior meal program, which is the $5 Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday meal program, uh, seniors drive up. I believe we actually were full up one of the days this so we're still seeing a high demand for that program. So we're doing everything we can do to continue to feed the community and make sure that all the, uh, ancillary issues that come with not having access to food don't happen in Norwood, because we're doing everything we do to keep people, uh, fed and to keep them healthy. We are, uh, still looking for donations to the Norwood Fund. We've had a lot of individuals who have been very generous, and I want to thank them on behalf of the town for their generosity. They are making a real impact in people's lives on a day-to-day basis, and we're forever grateful for that. Uh, we had a, um, a parade today that was organized by, uh, the Fire Chief in Canton, Chief Duty. Norwood Public Safety participated. It was a parade that went past the hospital to show thanks to our first responders. I'm sure anyone who's in, uh, in our hospital workers, I'm sure anyone who is in town today, uh, probably heard the parade, but a lot of folks came out to see it. They maintained the social distancing, and we've heard from the hospital folks that they were very appreciative of it. My apologies to the board. We were probably supposed to secure a parade permit, and we neglected to do so. We will next time make sure we secure the appropriate parade permit when we, uh, do so, but they were probably, uh, 25 or 30 apparatus from a number of communities in the area that, um, took time to drive through the community and by Norwood Hospital. I happened to ride in an engine with Chief Maurice, uh, and we, uh, the community was appreciative, and I believe the hospital was appreciative as well. Uh, one quick item before I want to just discuss the hospital at Mr. Maloney's request. If we're able to, the board, well, the board may notice, we've put two small signs out on the lawns at Town Hall, uh, supporting the class of 2020. There were no seniors this year in high school having a bit of a challenging year, not being able to close out their sports and their academic year in the traditional fashion, and we still don't know exactly what's going to happen with, uh, items like graduation and the prom, but we put two small signs up. If we're able to get a sign made in a reasonable amount of time and get it displayed with the schedule, will the board be opposed to putting a banner up along Washington Street?
I have no opposition whatsoever. Mr. Hajar has no opposition.
Great idea. Close your eyes if, uh, possible by the manager. Second?
Have a motion to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have to turn the roll call. Mr. Hajar?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. Chairman, just a question on, uh, what Tony was talking about, but, uh, for the dinners on Wednesdays at the, at the, at the high school. Um, are seniors allowed to get those meals too, or is it just families of schoolchildren?
Uh, that, that right now is just families of, of schoolchildren. We have a number of other programs for seniors. We're, we're doing a similar program at the senior center. Their meals that they get Monday, Tuesday, uh, Wednesday and Thursday are, it's really two meals in one, and then they're being provided with frozen meals and, um, additional food on a Friday to get them for the weekend if they do need it. Uh, so Kerry monitors that very closely with the senior center. We may look at doing a similar program, but what we're seeing with seniors, their main challenge is access to the grocery store. A lot of them are in that vulnerable category, and they're very concerned about being able to go out. The doubling in Meals on Wheels was not as much of an economic issue for seniors in the community as a lot of folks who were, who already struggled to get out, and the lack of transportation options that we have have made that more difficult. We are still running the senior bus. Uh, we have to run it at a greatly reduced level, so that leads to a little bit of, um, a time lag, uh, in being able to get everyone served. But nobody will go, uh, nobody will go unfed.
Thank you, Tony.
My pleasure. Uh, and thank you for the board. We will get working expeditiously on that banner, and Mr. Ryan is still on the call, so, uh, he's who I will delegate getting a banner made to. As you know, we're facing a little bit, uh, supply disruptions here and there with certain businesses that are operating and others that are, uh, not operating. Uh, Mr. Maloney mentioned Norwood Hospital, and in general, where we're going with COVID-19 as a whole. Uh, the governor extended the stay-at-home order until May 18th. We don't know whether that will be extended beyond then. They're looking at possibly having some sort of a Phase 1 of opening either after that or perhaps a few weeks after, uh, so that may 18th date. The hospital numbers have been stable. They have not hit capacity. Uh, we have here, uh, Norwood Hospital as of yesterday was at around 60% capacity. That's a good thing. We did not see an overload of hospitals, which was beneficial. As we relax social distancing protocols, you will see those numbers tend to trend up, but luckily we have not seen a capacity issue at the hospital as of yet. They have run out of testing. They have been able to, uh, test with the doctor's order all the way, um, from when they tested their first patient from COVID-19, which I believe was actually myself, uh, about seven or eight weeks ago. So they've been a great partner. They're continuing to work, um, and do wonderful things. We have three regular conference calls with them a week, and I'm in touch with Dr. Perla on a regular basis as well. In terms of the financial impact, one of the things we should be cognizant of, the hospital in addition to being a great partner to the community, is also a large taxpayer. They're a large water sewer and electric user as well. Hospitals throughout the Commonwealth are facing a huge fiscal loss from the, uh, inability to, um, complete elective procedures. We believe the Commonwealth issued that order to preserve some of the PPE and to make sure the hospital capacity didn't get overloaded. I would certainly hope that the, uh, that's one of the first things to return in a, uh, beginning of a loosening of a social distancing. Uh, I don't know the exact numbers for Norwood Hospital, but for hospitals that size, they're losing hundreds of thousands of dollars a day, uh, by not being able to complete elective procedures. So in terms of getting the economy up and running, it's absolutely critical for, uh, Norwood Hospital and for us here, Norwood as well as hospitals throughout the state, when it can be done safely. So there's a, a hidden there that we want to be cognizant of. We, of course, want to address it, uh, focusing first on public health and public safety is, uh, a serious concern for Norwood Hospital and every hospital in the, uh, in the Commonwealth and throughout the country as well. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Mr. Howard?
Uh, one more, if I could, Mr. Chair. With, with the extension of, of the stay-at-home, does our board by chance have to take a vote in any capacity of this?
No, sir. It is the order of the governor. We are to follow it whether we would want to or not. Uh, I did, we did get a question earlier today at the Board of Health meeting that could we, uh, open up ahead of the state, and the answer is no, we cannot. We, we have to follow the governor's orders. There are cases where we could go, uh, beyond that, but we're following the state, uh, state orders and the state statute, um, and the governor's orders to a T. We're hoping that there will be recommendations coming out soon for things like camps and pools and some idea of what the reopening plan is gonna look like, but it, we appear to be seeing flattening numbers, and that's one point with our numbers. As we test more people, the number of positive tests is gonna continue to flatline or continue to grow. We really want to look at that hospitalization level. Once that's flattened and begins to decline, that's a sign that we're making progress in where we want to be.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I would like to just say one thing, and I don't necessarily want to say it as the chairman or a member of the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to say it as a citizen of the town of Norwood. Uh, going back to your comments about the Norwood Bank. Norwood Bank, John Gavini and the staff and the entire Board of Directors have always been an asset to the town of Norwood. On many, many occasions, I can remember that it donated money unsolicited for many reasons. And while I still have Mr. Ryan here, there's even been times where we needed trees to be planted around town, and John Gavini and the board and the Board of Directors and so on have come forward with money, the suppliers, with trees, and whatever I need is. So they're a great institution, they're the hometown bank, and I want to thank them again, and we're lucky to have them in the, in the town.
You're here.
Any other comments? What's that?
Move to adjourn. Second?
I have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hajar? Mr. Maloney?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Plasko?
Aye.
And the board votes aye. So we're adjourned for the evening, and we'll be back next week, hopefully in a even more. Good night, everyone. Thank you, all.